You can.
I'm missing, I think, we're missing David. And, uh, action.
Did we hear from them?
Ashton is coming, right? Ashton's not here?
She is not going to be here. She emailed just a little bit ago. She's at surgery and she can't.
Oh, I hope she gets.
She's on the bench, she said.
Good. What about David?
No word.
Okay, so, so we will, well, I am gonna call the meeting to order because you're on time and that's wish it started, right? Okay, well, good evening, everybody. Welcome, um. Let's see. Lois, would you like to do the honors of reading the land acknowledgement and I sorry, I'm replying to here?
That is actually, I don't feel comfortable reading my acknowledge.
Without the second part.
Oh, but with pleasure.
Yeah, absolutely. Actually, I will say, I will say that, so just for the rest of you, uh, Lois had emailed me some thoughts about it and that the first part was like comfortable and the second part wasn't. And the second part actually was supposed to be like there was something we adopted, but we had agreed we were only ever reading the first part. And I don't know what happened, but it got pulled up into the top, so.
Yeah, it's beautiful. Yeah, okay, with pleasure.
Thanks. But we'd like to acknowledge we are on the traditional land of a rich and diverse group of native peoples who have called this area a home for more than ten thousand years. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the descendants of these native peoples who are still here today. Perfect. And then also Nick, can we put this on like official business for our next meeting or just revisit this and make a decision and whatever needs to happen? Um, okay, uh. Could I get a motion to bring the agenda to the table?
I'll move to the agenda.
A second. Thank you. Is there any discussion of the agenda or? Okay, great. Uh, all those in favor of adopting the agenda as published, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, uh, what about meeting minutes? Did everyone have a chance to review last one's minutes? Uh, could I get a motion to bring it to the table, please?
So moved.
Thanks, Dan. Second, thank you. Okay, what about, um, any comments on the meeting minutes, any edits? Questions, discussion?
I have a couple of edits, which just tells me I talked too much last time, but I have three edits and, and Nick for you, I've got them also typed up, so you don't wanna try to follow.
That'd be great, yes, you wanna send them.
I forgot to send them to you, by email, I can't do this.
Okay, yeah, anyway.
I have to read them.
Oh, okay.
So, so I'm on a, let's see, it's page five of the packet, three of the notes, I guess, um, so near the top, line three. This is correcting or just refining my own statement a little, um. There's a sentence here at the top says that ends with because of the nature and reality of how critical area regulations are applied, it ends on line three, sentence ends on line three. And I, I think, I don't remember exactly what my statement was, but this is what I'd like to insert as a statement after that, which was that specifically the landslide and steep slope critical areas have the biggest effect on the map, yet in many cases they do not in fact limit development, but simply require soil and slope analysis to ensure that it does not stabilize the area. So I'll send that to Nick, but I do remember saying that, I don't know if I said it quite as cogently, but I did specifically call out the steep slopes and landslide hazards that's kind of different than say streams and wetlands, for example. Uh, this was all in relation to that mapping exercise that our consultants did for us. Um, I have another one, just a few lines later. On line six, there's a, um, sentence that begins on line five, Commissioner Kaye said that he has calculated the possibilities and I want to insert on his own parcel, um, based on the information provided by Leland and said that the capacity might be underestimated based on the methodology. So it's just adding the words on his own parcel, because I certainly didn't calculate it for the city, I was just trying to follow it from my own parcel. And last one, same page, down at the bottom, line fifty-one. This one's even simpler, I want to add one word, uh, line fifty-one, he said that, I want to add that where regionally, there has been opposition to breaking the civil family housing model. And so on and so forth for the rest of the sentence. So I will send those to you, Nick, after the meeting.
If you want to just hand it to me.
I can do that.
Call it.
Perfect. Thanks, guys. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, oh, I can't remember Robert's rules, did they have, is the person who first at the table that they had to amend?
Disapprove of suspended.
Okay. Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor for approving the minutes as amended, say aye.
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 Opposed? Super. Okay. We are flipping right along. Uh, next meeting date, anybody have any issue with our next one? Uh, what, what day is six?
I have that.
Seven, eighth night, uh, January ninth? Aye. Uh, okay, we'll see you on the ninth. Uh, citizen comments, is anybody online with us, Nick?
Doesn't, uh, Don Feeney's there, um, but no hands, right, so.
Okay, he writes in.
Yay. Let's see what Mr. Feeney has to say, or Siri likes to call him Feeney.
Go ahead, Don, you're on mute.
Hi, Don.
Okay.
There you go.
Am I in?
Yep.
Okay.
Hello, Don.
Uh, I, I'd like to, to, uh, thank all of you in advance for the time that you'll be spending on this very important um, part of the city updating its comprehensive plan. Um, it's really great to have such a, a, a good turnout of people that are interested in, uh, participating. I'm also very excited that it appears the council either has or is about to extend Maddie's term as chair, and she's proven to be an excellent leader, so, uh, I, I think you all are fortunate to, to have her. Basically, that's my comments for this evening.
Thank you, Don. Um, and also they're not, I would say not extending this chair, because that's up to you. Um, it's, they asked, uh, I was asked, um, by Mayor-elect French if I would stand through the comprehensive plan. Because technically we have to roll out, roll off after two terms. And also Lois's, uh, term would be extended.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, they did, they emailed me.
Over the champagne.
Of course, um, but that does remind me, I think it is in February, I think we started to do, uh, a, a vote on chair, and then Steve left, and then it's just been kicked down the road, so maybe February we'll do it, we'll be right back on track. If you guys will have me for January.
First meeting.
Yeah. What, whatever you wish. Um, okay, so yeah, you're stuck with me through the comprehensive plan. Um, okay, let's see, uh, I will though, related to that, encourage, um, uh, Mayor like French, uh, to do what, uh, Mayor Johnson was trying to do, which was get some folks on the bench for planning permission, alternates, okay, uh. That's, does it for Donna? It's all you.
Uh, we have, um, a council meeting on Thursday night. First, we have a special council meeting at five thirty, and it's basically a celebration of, uh, Mayor Jeff Johnson's time of service for the city and also Councilmember Philippa Casover, so it's kind of a nice, um, uh, way to, and since we're gonna have a quorum, it's a special meeting, right? It's really a farewell celebration, um, and then, uh, starting at seven o'clock, we have our regular council meeting, and the agenda was really packed, I think. I don't know, Phil, I'm thinking we're gonna go pretty late.
We'll be done by ten.
Yeah, okay, we'll be done by ten, says Phil. Um, so, uh, we're going to, um, have a, a touch on the sign ordinance, but it's been a while, so we're not going, I don't think we're gonna make a decision on that.
Well, basically what we need to do is make sure the council doesn't have any changes, and then we've got to notice it with Congress.
Right. That's what, that's what we hadn't done, we'd have to go through the, check off the boxes of uh, having a public hearing, um, and also, and we could have some comment with that public hearing on that topic, and also making sure that the state can sign on. So, um, so that's good, so that will be getting ready to, yeah, adopted in January.
I, I'm gonna remember when we first imposed on her.
Late nineteen.
And I, it is, it has been on my perennial list of let's get this done.
Oh my goodness, I'm like, I don't need to worry.
Um, uh, so we also have, um, uh, a parking permit, residential parking permit process where seventy percent of the residents could, uh, petition for residential parking zone. Um, it's just a process there, it may never be used, or it could be used especially in connection, say, with building front park development. Uh, people might want to have weekend restrictions or something like that, so anyway, it's not, it, it is, we're thinking ahead to have that process available. Uh, so, uh, that is voiced for adoption, we've had our two touches, this will be our third touch. Um, there is also an ordinance on street racing. Um, and, uh, a motion to approve our new community development director.
Yay.
So, uh, so we will be meeting, I assume, uh, it's January, and Phil will be probably stepping back.
We'll still be at him.
Oh, you will, okay, I didn't know what the plan was.
I told Steve that, I, I think it's good.
Transition, yeah, yeah, very good. Um, so anyway, it's, it's a busy agenda, I probably missed something, but, uh, anyway, it's, uh, it's, it's the last of the year before we have two new council members and a new mayor. And then, uh, in, early in the, um, session of the new council, oh, uh, new council members and old council members like me are gonna get sworn in on December twenty-seventh, just in formally, so that when January one comes around, uh, we actually do have a constituted council and mayor, and, uh, and then, um, uh, at the January fourteenth meeting of the council, then decisions are made on the deputy mayor, who is basically the council chair and the vice chair and the budget committee chair, so we have some positions that we have to make decisions on. And, uh, it looks like, uh, the first weekend in February, we'll have an inauguration event at the civic club. So, that's, it's lots of changes, I know, I know, that's part of the reason why we have a full agenda is there are just a certain number of loose ends that we'd like to wrap up before we bring in new council members.
With folks that already.
With folks that are already here.
Yeah, so, there.
Anyway, so, uh, anything else, Phil, that I missed?
Um, this is for Christina too, so we have extended our to Mark Hoffman, he is the current community development director of Newcastle. Um, he has accepted it, we just need the council confirmation to authorize the mayor to officially operate in the position, comes with over twenty-seven years of experience, he's done common plan updates, he's, uh, spent a lot of reaching committees, and so he's highly qualified to be the addition to the city, so.
Most importantly, the staff loves him, he like clearly puts in love with the culture, so.
Yeah, and that's the one thing, it was, it's like you want the expertise, but you also want that fit, yeah. I think we found that.
Yeah.
Well, you know, Lake Forest Park is kind of a special place because of our size, our environment and stuff, and uh, it's like, it seems like he's gonna be a good fit in terms of our values and stuff like that, too, so.
Yeah, I worked with him a little bit.
Oh, you did?
When he was at City of Stoneholy, which at the time was just around ten thousand, this is a little bigger now, but always really liked him, had a really nice man, real nice attitude, so.
That's great, great to hear that, yeah. Anyway, that's it, so, and then happy holidays to everyone.
Honestly, is the, is the event, the special meeting, uh, this Thursday?
Yes.
Intended to be for the public, or is it a little bit more for the council?
Oh, it's for everyone.
I mean, I know I don't like to attend, but it's intended to be a community gathering or, or?
Didn't really advertise it as a special meeting, and there's, uh, proclamation, quick presentation. And some snacks.
The public is welcome, and we have to have snacks, because then we go immediately into our regular.
That's why I like to, till ten o'clock, and so.
Three A.M., like him.
I know, I, oh, that is, I don't know, a couple of other public announcements, so you may or may not have seen, uh, the CEO of Sound Transit, um, is stepping down after only sixteen months, uh, so, uh, her last day is like the second week in February, early, I mean, early January. Uh, and so that's interesting, because, you know, we thought she was brought in to improve public engagement and make ridership safer, but apparently the relationship with the board has been rocky. So the relationship with the board was rocky with the previous, don't get it, this is the previous CEO also, which is kind of interesting, so completely different personalities, but oh, well, so it'll be very interesting to see what the transition brings. And, uh, let's see, oh, and then the city of Kenmore, I don't know if you've seen the news article, but basically uh, they were proposing a affordable housing building for seniors, veterans and people with disabilities, but then somewhere in the process, it switched over to, uh, for homeless, a, a homeless person's residence, people experiencing homelessness residents. And, uh, so there was a public meeting with ninety comments that went to like three A.M., and they voted to not proceed with it right now. People felt that there was bait and switch, so it's ju- to me, it's an interesting message in communication, and the importance of communication, and, uh, you know, I think our city has, you know, we've learned that lesson different ways too, uh, so, you know, it, it, you can never communicate too much.
I, I also, on the bait and switch, I, I don't know if any of you else are on distributions list, but there, there was an email that went out of parking regulation, and I just wanted to know, thank you for sharing this, and, and I understand that it is a, a mechanism that could be exercised, so we don't have parking.
Oh, the permit process?
Permit process, we don't have it automatically, no rules are being set on, no, it's just a mechanism so that if a community is being profoundly impacted by parking, they could exercise that, and I think that, uh, the email that was signaling otherwise was.
Misunderstood, I think.
Misunderstood, that, so I appreciate.
Significance, and it's based on, uh, similar ordinances of other cities, and it's just a framework, but we did debate, uh, at our last meeting, should the threshold for the number of residents in the area or dwelling units in the area be seventy percent or sixty percent? We chose the higher number, uh, and, uh, you know, it's, um, it's, it's literally just a framework, and we don't, I, I'm sure if it gets implemented, we'll refine it, just like all our ordinances, we have a little experience with it, so. Yes, I, I thought that was, the, the person who wrote that misunderstood, I think, the intent of it, it's not a huge public significance at this point.
Well, it, it isn't that, for those who would be that were involved with safe streets, right, that we don't have the money to put titles in everywhere we want, and right now, it's, parking is a liability, a burden on our community, of the ability to, where it's happening, so. Thank you for your report and all your work, there's a lot going on, so looking forward to twenty twenty-four. I'm going to, for the time being, stay as liaison to the planning commission and the parks board, so, uh, you know, feel, uh, uh, I'd, I'd like to stick with, uh, the planning commission through the comprehensive planning process, and then maybe pass the baton to someone else.
Yay.
Hey. I appreciate that. Okay, um, I think we're to you, Christina.
Thank you, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, great. I am going to share my screen, we have a lot to get through, um. I may have been a little bit ambitious in my slide deck, so I may have to speed through some things to make sure we get it all. Um, we'll see, feel free to, to pause me if it seems like we're going a little too fast, um, but otherwise, let's, uh, let's get started, so here we are, comp plan update, um, and sorry. All right, so we are going to review today, um, uh, we're going to do a, a brief primer on diversity, equity and inclusion for comprehensive plan updates. Uh, this is important both for the housing element in particular and broadly for compliance with, uh, some policies from King County, PSRC, uh, and from the GMA. Uh, so we're gonna talk a little bit about how, um, how equity will appear in our discussions going forward. Uh, then we will review the community profile, talk a little bit about who we're planning for, and then we will start with our first element, which is land use. Uh, so just a quick update on the project status, I mentioned last time, we were awarded the middle housing grant, we are, uh, working on some amendments to the scope and budget for recommendations by the Department of Commerce, and as a result of those discussions with Commerce, we're also making some changes to the structure for community engagement and other document organizations, uh, items to meet some of the grant requirements for reporting, so that there are no issues with, um, the two grant funding streams. Uh, the climate planning grant, I believe, is still in review, um, and then the public participation plan has been drafted, that survey is still in progress because of the changes we're making related to middle housing. All right, the primer on diversity, equity and inclusion in comprehensive planning. Uh, this is, I'm sure many or all of you are probably already familiar with this, but just to make sure that everybody is generally on the same page, um, when we're talking about DEI as it applies to comprehensive planning, uh, I, I talked with Leland, and we thought that this would be a really valuable use of our time. So, um, when we, when we're talking about racially disparate impacts and diversity, equity and inclusion and comprehensive planning, we are responding to a number of different, uh, pieces of legislation, policy and guidance. Um, one of the big drivers are some requirements, Aiden HB twelve twenty, which is also where we get the affordability bands for our housing planning work. Um, the provisions around racially disparate impacts in HB twelve twenty require jurisdictions to examine racially disparate impacts, displacement, exclusion and displacement risk in housing policies and regulations, and adopt policies to begin to undo those impacts. Uh, and to support this work, the Department of Commerce published a guidebook, uh, with a recommended process for what that looks like. This is specific to the housing element, and that's where we'll look a lot at displacement risk, exclusion, um, historic impacts that have been maintained by the status quo over time, and talk about what makes sense in terms of policy interventions to help address those impacts and improve conditions for all people who are living in Lake Forest Park. Uh, beyond that, though, there are some other DEI requirements that appear in the guidance that we need to respond to as we're writing the comprehensive plan. King County's countywide planning policies are very intentional in calling out legacy impacts from historic decisions that have been maintained over time, and they are also intentionally, uh, quote, centering social equity and health. So this is something, uh, I'm sure if you read the, the King County countywide planning policies that I referenced in the cover memo, uh, you probably saw equity and public health and health as terms appear very frequently in the policies, that was a, a big priority for King County as we all, uh, move, move through the comprehensive plan update process. Um, and at the, the end of the day, the goal in King County CPPs um, is to create a future where everyone enjoys a safe and healthy place to live, work and play, and equal access to opportunity for those things. In PSRC's Vision twenty fifty, we also have some equity policies. Uh, PSRC Vision twenty fifty acknowledges historical land use and housing policies and the contributions those have made to racial inequity in terms of people's access to housing for wealth building, uh, access to opportunities, access to, uh, resources, recreational resources, amenities, um, things that, that touch on, uh, very much what, what King County also has called out. Um, and Vision twenty fifty also centers equity in all of the policy areas that it addresses. All right, so slipping back to the Department of Commerce, I'm gonna talk a little bit more about the guidance that they offer, because it's a pretty, um, pretty concrete framework that we can reference as we move through this process. So when, when they put this together, they provided some definitions for diversity, equity and inclusion. And, uh, again, this is focused on housing, so what they talk about in this guidebook, uh, does have a housing lens, uh, and we'll talk in the next couple of slides also about how we should consider an expansion of that to look at our other, uh, work areas. Uh, so diversity, uh, typically in, uh, in this guidance is a reference specifically to racial identity. Equity is a reference to access to housing and building home equity and wealth in that way. And then inclusion is typically related to inclusionary zoning, which are, uh, zoning to, like, development regulation interventions that help make housing more accessible to people with lower incomes. But diversity can be measured by a lot of other aspects of a, a person's identity, including some that are collected uh, through U.S. Census data and American Community Survey data, that includes income, education level, um, uh, ability and disability in the range within that identity, uh, mobility, uh, uh, ability to speak English or other languages at home, English proficiency. Many policy, and when I say our, I'm talking kind of collectively in, in our region. So, uh, many of our policy requirements primarily consider racial diversity because it is so closely associated with other social determinants. Um, and so that's, that's one of the reasons why you see so, uh, so much of the guidance directly referencing racial diversity in particular versus any of the other ways that people can differ. Equity, um, beyond just the definition that is provided in Department of Commerce's guidebook, is this quality of being fair and impartial and providing, uh, uh, more equal footing for all people, meeting them where they are. In planning specifically, our work in equity includes recognizing planning practices that have had a disparate impact on certain communities and actively working with those affected residents to create better communities for all. So this is really, um, looking at how we can more equit- equitably engage with residents, uh, and do better to incorporate the needs and perspectives of varying people that live in our, in our community. Uh, and when we talk about equity, uh, we also talk about gentrification, environmental justice, community engagement and empowerment, so those are some areas where we'll talk, uh, uh, about equity quite a bit as we move through the process. Uh, and then finally, inclusion, this one is where we talk, uh, quite a lot about different kinds of public engagement, and the, the purpose in inclusion is to move from participatory methods where people, um, have, have less agency in the process towards more collaborative or empowering methods where people can really shape the outcome of the planning process. Uh, this is a, a tool, IAP two's spectrum of public participation, uh, that is a pretty good representation of what kinds of options are out there and where they might fall on this kind of spectrum. And I, I do want to be clear that all of these tools that are shown in this table, uh, in, in form, uh, informative methods, consulting methods, involvement, collaborative methods and empowerment methods, all of them have their uses, but, uh, to, to work towards inclusion, uh, we want to make sure that we are using authentically methods that allow for collaboration and empowerment by community members that have, um, uh, that are historically, uh, part of historically disenfranchised or marginalized groups. Um, these kinds of things are referenced in our public participation. These kinds of things are referenced in our public participation plan. So I I want you also to be aware that these are already things that we're considering as we're doing our engagement work. We also talk about measuring racially disparate impacts. And there are some direct measures and indirect measures that are shown here. This is not an exhaustive list, but these are the kinds of tools that we can be thinking about when we're, when we're thinking about how we can measure success in our implementation of DEI-related policies. Direct measures would be the rate of homeownership. We've talked about already some of the challenges with housing costs and housing cost burden for different households in Lake Forest Park and how that that issue has changed in recent years. Overcrowding, putting a large family in a space that's really too small. Neighborhood access, which has to do with the connectivity to other resources and places of employment. Indirect measures, look at environmental health hazards. This is maybe less of a concern in Lake Forest Park compared to places that have a bigger industrial base. But also commute burden if people are forced to leave the community to find a job. How, how long that's taking, the costs associated with commuting, changes in life expectancy, access to different kinds of educational opportunities within a reasonable distance from somebody's home. All of these things are are some ways that we can measure racially disparate impacts and track whether or not we're improving over time. As far as the housing focus in particular goes, we will be following a displacement risk assessment process. This is something that is laid out by the Department of Commerce. And so this is something that Leland Consulting Group is working on. And this assessment looks at some of the indicators that we just talked about. Some of the other economic indicators related to housing and and follows, follows the process to talk about different kinds of vulnerability for different populations in the community. So you should expect to see that. I believe they're coming back in March. But heads up that this is, this is coming from commerce. This is a process that we're following. So you'll get a little bit more specific information about what the risk looks like in Lake Forest Park, and then we can talk a little bit more about policy interventions at that time. Some things that are going to be a little bit more applicable to the broader comp plan update process is the approach to policy evaluation and revision, policy language. Whatever the intent was, the impact may have some some unintentional racial outcomes. And we can be intentional about making our policy language more inclusive and actionable. In this example, we're looking specifically at word choices which can can either help or harm groups that are historically disenfranchised. So line one on the table looks at a policy that says maintain the character of established single-family neighborhoods through adoption and enforcement of appropriate regulations. They have revised the policy to remove the character of single-family neighborhoods and focus on the things related to neighborhood character that are very important in this particular example, which is the scale and form of buildings being consistent with with what's already there. So it provides more flexibility for alternative housing types that will still fit effectively in a single-family residential neighborhood. And in this way, it improves inclusivity. So as an example, and then they also document the rationale. And this is similar for the remaining examples in this particular table. So this is a lens that we will be using throughout the update process as we're reviewing all of the policies. We will highlight exclusionary freezing and make some suggestions for alternative language that can be used there. Finally, once we are through our initial draft of recommended updates, we have some questions that we can use to grade ourselves and figure out if we're on the right track. So we don't need to necessarily look at all of these questions for every single policy, every single time. But these are some questions that we can be asking ourselves to make sure that we are appropriately considering equity and reflecting that in the work that we're doing as we're revising goals and policies and setting up implementation actions. These questions really get at a consideration of intention in how language for these goals and policies is constructed. Who may or may not benefit and whether those benefits can be broadened or any potential burdens can be minimized, eliminated or more evenly spread across, across the community so that no one group is really getting, getting the most burden. Looking at whether or not we've done our homework to talk to people that have, you know, that are part of these communities that have historically been disenfranchised, disempowered in the process and make sure that their opinion is solicited and included and that they are helping to craft the policies that are relevant to them when we're talking about undoing historic harms. And then also making sure that policies are clearly implementable so that we can start to track whether we are doing good. Before we move on, are there any questions on the diversity, equity and inclusion information?
I have one, one question. Just the term that you didn't touch on, what is fair housing testing? I'm just not familiar with that term. It was in the measures, rec measures.
Yeah, so fair, fair housing test, testing. I, I'm, I'm going to have to get back to you on the specific definition for that. I deleted my notes when I was putting the presentation together and I don't have a handy reference available. I apologize, but I will send a follow-up with the definition for what that means.
Thank you.
Alright, sorry about that. Thank you.
You know that five, the federal housing agency does do fair housing testing. I don't know if the state does too. And what they do is they send prospective buyers, tenants out to see how they, you know, incognito to see how they fare in the marketplace and if there's disparate treatment. So I suspect it's along those lines. If there are such reports or things available, they should be considered.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay.
No.
Alright, um, okay, then let's talk a little bit about the community profile. So this is a summary basically of who we're planning for as we move through this process. So how have your demographics changed? Andrew and David presented a little bit of information in this regard when we were talking about housing. We're going to talk a little bit more broadly and and then we're going to talk more specifically about the land use element now that we are going to understand more about who lives here. So I do note one correction. I just sent a revised community profile document out. It looks like the the version that I included for the packet had some data that was copied over from a template. And so now this, the housing types information on page 14 has been updated, including the figures on that sheet. So you should get a copy via email after the meeting and I apologize for that error. Alright, so now that we've talked a little bit about race and ethnicity as it relates to diversity, equity and inclusion, we'll talk a little bit about who's actually here. And and we can talk also about some, some other indicators as well. So I'm sure it comes as no surprise that almost 80% of vast majority of the city is identifies as white alone with kind of a mix of other races and people that identify as two or more races present. Some of the, the specific populations that we would be looking at that have a little bit higher representation would be people that identify as as Asian alone. And Asian includes East Asian as well as members from the Indian subcontinent. So it's, it's not a very granular data set the way it's currently collected. We also have a, a black or African-American population around 3.7% of the city. So still a fairly significant group. And then people that identify as two or more races, 5.8%. And then some, some other race that's not part of the data collection, about two and a half percent. The American Indian, Alaska Native alone and Native Hawaiian and other Pacific Island alone are both less than 1%, but still present in our community. And then we also have nearly 10% of residents identify as as Hispanic or Latino of any race in terms of ethnicity. So we've got some diversity here and this is something that we want to make sure that we're cognizant of as we're moving through the update process. When we're talking about race, you know, in many cases, race is associated with some of the, the lower determinants of social equity that make it a little bit more challenging to, to build wealth, to have access to opportunity, to have higher paying jobs or better education. And we want to make sure that as we're planning that we are keeping that in the, in the back of our minds or in the forefront for some of our conversations to make sure that we're doing good. Some of the other demographic indicators that we have presented in the community profile include age and gender, degree of education, there's income and jobs information and some house, household information. Lake Forest Park has a fairly, what's called a stationary population pyramid where it's, it's rather evenly distributed instead of being like a classic pyramid shape or an inverted pyramid shape. And that, that means that the, the population is pretty stable. Births balance out deaths or relocations as people are leaving, kind of generally speaking. A vast majority of residents in Lake Forest Park are college educated. Nearly 90% have some college education or a degree or advanced degree, which is pretty interesting. And then median household incomes are higher than King County as a whole, around just shy of 140,000. But at the same time, some residents are still making significantly less than federal poverty guidelines. So 9% are classified as insignificant poverty, meaning that they have incomes below 200% of the federal poverty level. Which has some, some pretty significant implications in terms of access to housing and and jobs availability as well. Jobs in Lake Forest Park within the city are predominantly retail, healthcare and service industry. I think that Andrew and David gave a pretty good overview about that. Workers in Lake Forest Park do tend to commute outside the city for healthcare, education, retail and tech jobs. Pretty, pretty limited, just around 100 residents hold jobs in the city. So they, they live and work in the same place, which is a very small number overall. Now, a lot of people are commuting elsewhere for access to higher paying jobs. Household sizes have gotten larger and they're larger. Yes.
Christina, a question on that because I do think that I'm just looking at my neighbors and other people I know who live dispersed around Lake Forest Park. And a lot of people are actually not commuting all the time at least. And some are commuting just one day a week and other, and so they're kind of working from home a lot. And so is, are we going to factor that in as a demographic indicator? Because that is different from the last time we did the comprehensive plan. And it to me, so, so saying workers tend to commute outside the city, it's kind of only half through, you know, is, is what I'm saying.
It's a, it's a good point. So it, and this is, this is something that it's just not very clearly tracked right now, how the work from home dynamic has, has impacted commute patterns. This, it's a limitation that we've talked about with respect to housing. I agree. So maybe, maybe this particular data point needs to be rephrased to say that the, the job is based outside of Lake Forest Park, but that we lack information about the ability to work from home.
Yeah, that would be great. I think I, I just wanted to capture that because it makes it sound like it's either all in Lake Forest Park or all outside Lake Forest Park. That's all.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for bringing that back up. That's a very good point. Okay, household sizes, household sizes have gotten larger than, than they were historically. And they're also larger than King County as a whole. So we're looking at about 2.55 people per average household, which means that we were definitely in need of family-sized housing units in the city. That's often a single-family homes, but also if we're talking about middle housing and multifamily types of housing, we're, we're wanting to look at something with a larger bedroom count as we're starting to, to plan around what that might look like. And then housing stock, as we know, is predominantly single-family detached homes. And it's aging with more than half of housing in the city built prior to 1970. So we also recognize that there are some potential opportunities for redevelopment or infill development as some of these units become functionally obsolete or or otherwise have some issue related to their age that that makes redevelopment a more attractive option. And finally, again, something that we, I think, are collectively aware of that many households, about 36%, so over a third of households in Lake Forest Park are cost burden, meaning that they're spending 30% or more of their income just on housing. The future conditions that we've identified beyond just the housing allocations that were required to plan for are, are shown here. So Lake Forest Park's population might grow by approximately 1,436 people by 2024. If we're holding our growth rate fairly steady. We know that that's going to be spread out among some, some different housing units. We can make some estimates based on the household size. But regardless, we will be planning for about 870 new housing units that address the affordability bands identified in HB 1220, about 550 new jobs. And then I just wanted to remind us all that the existing capacity, the zoned capacity in Lake Forest Park is general, generally adequate to achieve these requirements. But we, we do need to talk about the additional capacity that will be created by requirements or authorizing duplexes and certain middle, middle housing types in the residential zoning districts. And that is something that will refine as Leland continues to advance their work on the alternative compliance analysis and the, the rest of the land capacity analysis that they're, that they're wrapping up for us. Are there any other questions on the demographic profile before we move on?
Lois has a question. In the diversity section, is there any discussion about the LGBT?
There's, there's not, that's not a piece of data that's well tracked. We don't want to accidentally exclude anybody that is any part of the LGBTQIA or questioning community. And if, if we've got contacts within that community or communities, then we certainly want to make sure that we are working with them in our outreach efforts. But as far as census data that's available, that's not something that's collected very effectively.
Any other questions? That made me think about the fact that when we adopted our ADU ordinances, we talked about age diversity and life stage diversity. And you know, to me, it's very interesting that we have kind of a wide range of age diversity in our community. But because we were kind of aware of people aging in place and, and the need to provide housing for younger people and and for people who want to stay in the community, even though, you know, it might be difficult. So anyway, I just flagged that as a diversity that I think in our community, it seems like we have a balance of different age groups, more than I realized. And, and that's a good thing to help keep preserving in the future going forward, especially at the upper and the lower end of the age ranges. Because we want to have a community with families and children and we want people to not have to leave to go elsewhere as they get older. So anyway, just wanted to flag that aspect of diversity, Christina. Because I realize it's probably not in the Department of Commerce manual, but it's what in our community, there's been a lot of discussion though.
Yes. So Department of Commerce does focus on racial diversity in particular, but aging in place is, is good practice and it's something that's important to, I know it's important to Lake Forest Park as a community to make sure that people that have lived here and given so much to the quality of the community that's, that's present now, that get to stay and enjoy that. And it's, it's not something that we'll lose track of. It's something that we know is a priority.
Thank you.
Christine, I had a question just on, on several slides back and then about this. Is there a underlying formula for, you know, the size of the house? It was, it was like maybe two or three slides back and you talked about families that are living in too small of a house.
So we're not specifically tracking families living in too small of a house. When we talk about household size, we're looking at that as kind of an indicator of the, the types of units that are going to be appropriate. So like a, a community where the average household size is lower might see a lot of benefit from studio and one bedroom apartments versus when we, when we see something like 2.55. We know that, that Lake Forest Park is absolutely a family community, not a singles community. And so when we are thinking about housing types and planning for where some of these missing middle housing types might appear, we want to make sure that we're also thinking about how the number, the number of bedrooms can, can fit into that discussion to make sure that we're providing units that meet the needs of the people that are here. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just, I was trying to make that come together. I was thinking, you know, one of the things that we're wrestling with in our community is having enough diversity of housing. And so I, it's kind of the chicken and the egg, you know, we have a lot of family houses and so it's appealing for families. But if you have a, somebody who's widowed and needs a studio or a one bedroom, you know, to age in place, there's a lot of options currently. And so I was just trying to think about how do we right size our code to allow the, the greatest diversity, I think, of, of housing sizes and, and types.
Yeah. And I mean, one of the things that you'll find is like in a multifamily project, you're not going to have any problem getting the smaller units. Because that is more profitable in pretty much all cases for the, either the developer, if they're being sold off or for the, the company that is managing the, the project. And it's, it's typically, again, looking at multifamilies typically more needful to require family sized units of three bedrooms or more versus the other way around. That's, so that, that does require again, a little bit more effort to, to get the multifamily projects in. So that's where we start to look at potentially some of the barriers that Andrew and David talked about last time. They, they have to do the barrier assessment to look at why a certain kinds of housing development has lagged. So we'll learn a little bit more about that also next time. But, but I, and then, so sorry, going to many different directions at once. So for, for multifamily in particular, that's typically not going to be a problem. But if we're, if we're back to looking at more of a, a single family detached style of product, then looking for ways to support more ADU development as a good alternative for people to have that kind of option or certain kinds of smaller middle housing types, like a duplex situation or, or a smaller multiplex situation could also be an appropriate way to try and get that demographic.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay.
I note, I, I don't know what is going to happen with this document, but I noticed a couple of errors. I didn't know if that would be helpful to share or if this is all that we'll see of it. And so I didn't know if this is going to go in the comp plan.
This does get incorporated into the background analysis and portions of it will reappear when we're updating the, the narrative portion of the land use element. So you'll see, you'll see some of this again. This is kind of the consolidated report and we'll, we'll pull, so this will get filed as part of the appendix in volume two. So if there are some corrections that you see that need to be made, send them to Nick and he can forward them to me. All right. So this is we'll, we'll move on to land use element now. This is our first opportunity to talk about the land use element. And what we will be doing after, what, what my team will be doing after this is taking the results of our discussion and preparing an underlying strike, attract changes version of an updated element for consideration at the next meeting. So this is where we talk about how some of the changes could or should appear for making relevant revisions that make sense for Lake Forest Park, considering our community vision and our values and our priorities. So to, to get us started, I wanted to present kind of a policy framework to make sure that we all understand what the different parts are that we're talking about updating. And that starts at a high level with goals. So goals are fairly vague statements that start to move us toward the community vision. Keywords that you will often see in goals are things like facilitate, promote, encourage. You'll see all of these in various places in your own comprehensive plan. We will be looking for opportunities to simplify language in our goals and confirm that all of the policies that are under the goal are consistent with the goal in light of the changes that are required. Policies are moderately specific steps that will make the goals possible. These are things, the keywords you'll see are, are things like maintain, enhance, encourage, promote, increase, designate, all of the keywords here. They lead to actions, but policies in and of themselves are not actions. They still require some kind of action to come to fruition. And then we can, we can phrase them with and statements that might get us to an action part of the statement, which is the very specific item that will be used for implementation and is the, the check mark where you can say, yes, we were successful, we did the thing and we are moving closer to implementing these policies and this goal. Actions are, have, have keywords like develop, adopt, map, evaluate, things that are specific work items where you can take it out of plan and accomplish that task. We will be looking at identifying actions that already exist within policies. We want to make sure that those are not confusingly worded or jumbled up with the policy. And we might suggest some new actions that get incorporated into our implementation. Are there any questions about the policy framework?
So the, the plan as it stands just has goals and policies, not actions. So will that be kind of like an additional element that is now incorporated?
So I, we can talk a little bit about what the, what the implementation plan looks like. I like to have it as kind of a standalone piece of the document because then it's very easy to reference on an annual basis and track your progress. It's not spread out across all of the elements. So my, my recommendation is to have it separately, separately contained in its own chapter. So we, we could consider, I'm sorry, my dog is barking at my door. Just a minute. He is very loud. Apologies for that. So we, we can put it in a separate chapter. We can also leave the, the actions in the relevant element chapters. It'll be something that, that we collectively decide on. There might also be actions that are hidden or phrased as a policy that really should be a specific implementation action and are labeled as a policy right now, but that are, that are actually an actionable item that we could potentially put in, in that kind of implementation plan. So we'll identify those two. Does anybody have any immediate thoughts on the implementation plan and how we might structure that? Because we can start to build that now as we're doing our red line of the, the land use element.
We're not getting, we're getting hit nods here.
Oh, okay. So we, do we like the idea of a separate implementation chapter? Something that can be used to track on an annual basis?
Can we circle back to this after we've had a chance to sort of consider the implications of that or what that might, the utility of that?
Sure thing. No problem. All right.
Just a suggestion, we could have it, you know, following each element or we, I, I really like the, you know, the kind of little areas right here where we could just have kind of a little task list for the, anyway, just to
Like a sidebar.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So as we're talking about updating the elements, we have some, some overall objectives. We want to ensure regulatory compliance and this will be true of all of the elements. We'll revisit this slide at the beginning of each element. So at the, at the end of the day, we need to achieve regulatory compliance with the Growth Management Act and its recent amendments, with King County's countywide planning policies and with PSRC Vision 2050. These are all of the, the framework pieces that, that influence what the comprehensive plan needs to include and some of the requirements that it needs to address. At the same time, we want to make sure that we're responding to all of those directives in a way that is consistent with the community vision and the community's priorities for development over time. So to summarize what the vision includes, we talked about this last, the time before last, I believe, is a balance of environmental preservation, economic vitality and residential neighborhoods, supporting diverse cultures and perspectives, ensuring that town center remains the vibrant heart of the community and creating safe and well-connected neighborhoods. So keeping that in mind as we move through our discussion. Overall, we found that your existing land use element is generally consistent with the overall framework, which is great. The, there are some new, new policies related to equity and health in King County's countywide planning policies. So some of what is required to be addressed in the updated land use element are creating specific policies, policies and strategies for a more equitable future with access to opportunity. Planning for the new housing and employment allocations and ensuring consistency in water, sewer, transportation, utility and other infrastructure plans. Many, many of the other policies are things that I, are already, something that we're already consistent with in the existing land use element or something that will be naturally addressed as we work through the rest of the update process on the other elements. So I'm not specifically highlighting them. These are, these are the ones that I think that we should talk a little bit about in terms of how the Lake Forest Park community wants, wants to address them. Some things to consider as we think about the updates to the land use element are explicitly addressing equity and racially disparate impacts in our goals and policies and encouraging infill and redevelopment, the reuse of existing buildings and underutilized lands and provision of adequate public spaces to enhance public health, community character and mixed uses. So these, these are some, some goals that are specifically called out. And I think from my perspective, that infill and redevelopment goes fairly hand in hand with some of the legislative requirements around duplexes and middle housing. And that could be one of the specific policies or goals that, that help support that equitable future and the access to opportunity piece. Is that something that you think the community would accept? Supporting infill that, that dovetails with those requirements? Knowing of course that we'll have to talk a little bit more about that through the, the housing piece when Leland finishes their analysis. We're talking kind of conceptual level in terms of whether that's the direction we want to go for addressing equity and also addressing these legislative requirements.
So your question is, will the community support this encouragement of infill and redevelopment? That's consistent with the new policies, state policies?
Yes, essentially is, is this kind of encouragement versus just, just allowing it, but encouraging infill and redevelopment in, in those ways? Is that something that we think the community would be supportive of as a way to address some of the equity requirements in these new policies?
It, it just seems like such a big conflict with single family zoning. So I, I mean, it seems like you'd have to really overturn the zoning or, I mean, I don't know how their restrictions allow multifamily. I think, I think it's a really big ask because people are stretching what they have and then for them to build like something on your property in addition for a rental or something like that. I think that that's, that's something that I know our family couldn't do it. You know, it's very expensive to build a unit on your property or to even add on or even remodel. But you know, that's just not in somebody's budget, really. That's my opinion. So.
Maybe you could be more clear about what you mean by encouraging. What, are, are you talking about the lots that we saw last time that are lots that would probably be good for redevelopment? Or are you, are you saying something different to that?
It would, I think, build on that, the analysis that was completed last time. So of course, there would never be a requirement that people need to redevelop if they meet criteria or anything like that. That's not what we're going for, but having language that specifically supports infill more broadly than just, than just allowing it, but, but more particularly encouraging it. Some policies that could come from that or some actions that could come from that relate to perhaps adopting supportive development regulations or looking at ways to expedite a process to, to help that kind of development go more quickly. There, there are, there are a number of ways that we could encourage infill and redevelopment in, in that way.
But Christina, I just, I'm sorry, just to be clear, you're, it sounds like you're saying that, you know, we could be in compliance with the state's new regulations, which does allow for this infill, infill and redevelopment. But is there an appetite locally to try to persuade the nature of that infill and redevelopment to focus on our diversity and inclusion and equity goals? Is that what you're asking?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, I guess my response is I think we need to ask the community. I'm not sure that, I mean, I think that's part of the, the process. I mean, the way I think about your question is, should we be specifically thinking about incentives to do certain types of redevelopment? As opposed to just saying it's okay to do that kind of redevelopment. And there are lots of ways to do that. But I think, you know, I mean, we probably all have our opinions about how we might think about that. But I think this is maybe one of the biggest questions we're gonna need to talk to the community about is how. Do we just sort of allow because we're required to allow by new state law? Or do we want to proactively incentivize certain types of infill and redevelopment? That we think fits, but also addresses some of these needs. So. I'm not sure if we could answer that tonight. I'd sure like to hear from, you know, a lot of people about that. Um, that's one of the biggest questions for me.
It sounds like this could be a good survey item, you know, on the community survey, but.
And it, it is, um, in the, in the draft of the survey that we have so far, we do have a number of questions that, that get at. This, uh, specific issue so that we can get some very focused community feedback on it. I'm kind of looking for, uh, like a general sense at more of a high level. If this is a path that we should consider. Pursuing as we're, uh, looking at, at implementing equity throughout the land use settlement update. Uh, if this is, if this is even a direction that's worthwhile to, to pursue.
I mean, um, I don't know if it's necessary because especially if everyone is made aware of what new options they have. Each family, like you said, is gonna look at their particular circumstance and see if this is something that makes sense for them. And one concern I really do have is not wanting to ever put pressure. And, and have someone make a choice that was not in their best interest. And I did have concerns. I, um, in one of the documents, it said that there, you know, that some people have more bedrooms than is necessary for them. And so I would hate to have someone in our community say, gosh, do I have too many bedrooms necessarily? Maybe I should. Redevelop because, uh, out of guilt and I, I really would not feel comfortable. Uh, you know, I think that we've got new options and every family can, you know. Decide for themselves what is best for their property and.
I saw that actually as well. And I don't think that that kind of verbiage is gonna gain you supporters. If they see that, people feel like, like they need to leave their homes or have some other option just because, you know, they, their children have grown up and left the house. And suddenly like, oh, well, you have too much house. Well, who's, who are we to decide that? So.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I think, I mean, I think we talked about this last time. Context is really important for our community. Affordability means different things to different people. And I think personal guilt is probably less of a, I mean, that would be my prediction that families writ large are not. You know, they're still going to do what's in their best interest and, and most of us don't have access to the kind of capital to do that sort of redevelopment. I think what, if we're serious about diversifying, you know, the size of houses and diversity of houses in our community. We are going to need models, uh, like Yanni said, I mean, we need to hear from the community. But prior to that, it feels like a lot of our work, Christina, ought to be on models and outcomes. Of those possibilities so that we can see a more full picture. Simply. Uh, binding by this, the state's new policies is going to be. First and foremost, attractive to developers who can redevelop the property in order to maximize their financial return. Without necessarily getting us to those equity and inclusion and diversity goals that we are talking about. So I would. I would think in response to your question, Christina, yes, we, we should be exploring those. We should be finding the models. That would allow us to achieve those goals in the face of updating our policies to meet the state requirements. And before we go to the community and talk with the community, I think we need to be able to paint a picture of what we mean by affordability, what we mean by diversity. What we mean by models that promote inclusion because simply, simply saying, well, the state says we have to allow for infill and redevelopment. Almost certainly guarantees we're not going to get what we are aspiring.
Can I also say words matter? I think if you put out to the community those words, encourage infill and redevelopment. People are gonna like, think about developers coming in and buying them out and raising property prices. Uh, and not actually making things more affordable for families. But, uh, and so, so those words I think will, would not resonate as well as maybe expressing. Things in some of the ways that, that you all have. Um, I think on the other hand. A provision of adequate public spaces for public health, community character and a mix of uses. I could see that that would resonate with our community. So, um, reuse of existing buildings and underutilized lands. I could even see that resonating well, but I just thought that phrase encouraging infill and redevelopment. Would just, again, you could say it differently, uh, but those words, I think. And like I, you said it, context matters, but so do the words. I thought, when I saw those words, I thought, oh, those would, those words. I don't mean the concept. I don't mean the context. I mean, those words I don't think would resonate that well. Just like the extra bedrooms language you're talking about. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think we would love the opportunity to be able to. Look at, review, you know, offer input on language for, you know, all of the, the work that we'll be doing. To do outreach for the public because I do think that our long-term success with this process depends on sort of weeding out. Some of that, but, uh, you know, I, I think one of the things we learned from our town center work is the pictures matter. Um, you know, from the public outreach that was done at the beginning of that process, which showed a lot of pictures that we couldn't code for. Or enforce, you know, and fountains and beautiful places for you to hang out with your family. Uh. Those pictures ultimately didn't matter, but got folks excited. What mattered was massing and when folks started seeing massing. You know, and with all the other pretty stripped away, um, it changed the conversation. And so I do think that. Pictures that reflects, you know, that, uh, what was the, uh, form and, um. What was the other word that we were talking about? When you, when you showed the chart about better language? Yeah. No, it was.
Oh, the, the policy, the form and.
Yeah, yeah. You know, instead of saying cottage housing, which freaks some people out of affordable housing or whatever, being able to show pictures of like, maybe. A little, you know, cottage next to a larger house or, you know, th- those are the kinds of things that I think. Really help move the conversation along without driving a lot of fear and resistance.
And if we can capture some way to then verbalize the character of that, even if it is infill and redevelopment. So I think of the Community Land Trust project in Tukwila and, you know, that's not a single family zone project. And that is kind of an infill, right? And a redevelopment. But how do we capture that in the right, the right words?
I, I guess, I just wanna say, I think one of our roles as a planning commission is also to. Be able to share with the community some kind of sideboards, like, hey, this is what it looks like. Like this, this issue of do we want to encourage it? Well, what does that look like? Well, encouraging might be that we have incentives. Like actual financial or regulatory incentives for developers to, if they're gonna redevelop. We really wanna see this scale of housing. So we're gonna give you a density bonus if you produce that kind of thing. That's an example. That's not saying that's what we're saying we want, but I think if we can give the community. Like some specific examples of what things could look like. The, the other extreme might be, we're gonna do, you know. The minimum of what the state says, and this is what that looks like. My guess is they're gonna be somewhere in between, but I think the more we can illustrate that this is what these questions mean and not have it just be kind of implied. You know, meaning, but rather say, this, this is what we mean. We said we want to encourage. Do we want to encourage with financial, regulatory, other options? That happens all the time. So do we want that to meet some of these needs? Maybe the answer's no, but. I think we should be sharing that, you know, kind of a broad, I mean, the council gets to do the hard part. They get to make, we're recommending. So I think for us to recommend, we should be, if you are, we're not. We're not in the same way. I think for us to do our job, we should be illustrating to the community the range of all, uh, alternatives. And then hear from them and that should inform what we recommend and then you get to do the hard work and get yelled at publicly.
Okay.
No, I, I, I think it does help. Um, and what I'm, what I'm now thinking you'll see at our next meeting is. A, a red line version and then a, a section of options for, for discussion. Um, that are, uh, sug- suggested goals and policies, goals and related policies. Um, and you can see what those look like and then, uh, we'll, we'll have to adjust. Also, once we've got the survey out and have those results back and have vetted some of those options. But I think that having a discussion of what some of the options we're considering, that we, that we do wanna have a community conversation about. I think having that discussion in advance will be helpful, um, as we finalize the survey. Okay, so.
Comment, um, you know, maybe one thing that I would like to see would be encouraging, uh, more creative. Not southern language that encourages creative designs, creative ways that we can look at zoning. So we can, uh, bring forth, address some of the, the challenges that the state is, is giving us. But, uh, when you look at LFP and all the architectural creative designs that have occurred, how does that happen? But, you know, I would love to, to kind of play with that. And, and when you look at our community, we are, are tons of artists are hiding around above us. But to allow the, the plan to reflect that we, you know, given these state requirements, we really encourage. You know, creative responses to, you know, whether it's flexibility in zoning, creative responses to design. Uh, maybe something along those lines, uh, in time of, yeah, kind of reframe infill and redevelopment.
Yeah, I, I like that. And I mean, there's. There's some really exciting opportunities for creativity, especially with, um, infill or, um. Uh, adaptive reuse or, or other kinds of reuse of existing buildings that I think. Really, really let individual styles shine. I, I don't, my, my opinion, my personal opinion is that there's a lot of strong reaction against the, uh, the more repetitive. Architectural styles that we see from the typical developer that's just looking to maximize an envelope and profitability. Um, and so definitely some of the smaller infill projects and the building reuse projects are, um. They're, they're more challenging and so I think they require a little bit more of a creative outlet. Um, but that's my, my opinion. Um, but I, I really like what you're, the direction that you're going, uh, with that, with that comment.
Some of the state legislative proposals are trying to eliminate design review processes. Right, it's not, it's just. It's not like just aesthetics. It's, it's the, you know, the nature of the building itself.
Right, but our core value is that we do appreciate innovation. We do appreciate and sometimes when, when it's written down and, and we're talking about the comp plan. And, and really envisioning what it is that we want to build as, as our city. Uh, and I, I just, you know, I haven't thought of it, but somebody's pretty smart or creative or artistic could sure come forth and. But I want that to be, you know, if we express it as a value that we have as a city, uh, and somebody reads that, somebody can say, hey, that's what's important. Uh, we can, you know, just the words infill redevelopment where this cookie cutter, these cookie cutter words that we use in planning. But sometimes, you know, there's, yeah, I think, you know, outside of the box or encouraging.
Yeah. I, I appreciate that. Um, and we're still, we're all still allowed to have design. Regulations and design guidelines, uh, but they do have to be objective. So, uh, there, there's. Less, uh, interpretation and more consistency in the application of the standards. Um, but that's, that's something that we can, that we can consider as we're thinking about how. We can make some of these options more palatable, uh, if, if that's the, the direction we do end up going. Um, so I, I. Appreciate this discussion.
I think one other thing that is, is relevant to this point that I don't wanna lose sight of. And it might be good for us to explore as part of the, the outreach efforts and, and otherwise, is the percentage of housing units. In Lake Forest Park that are vacant. And the data that was shared in, in the pre-read, you know, suggesting that. You know, about two hundred and forty-eight units in Lake Forest Park are in fact built and vacant, not occupied by a, a tenant or an owner. I think gets to the spirit of, you know, reuse of existing buildings, underutilized lands. You know, you don't have to build or construct more if there was an ability to unlock more of that supply for housing.
Yeah, that's a great point.
I, I, yeah, I had a question. Are you talking about Sam, are you talking about on page twenty-one and how it said two hundred and forty-eight units were vacant? Yeah, I was, I had a question, you know, why are they vacant? Is that just a very normal number? You know, when you take a snapshot that, you know, people are selling their house and so it's vacant before the new tenant, or the new owners move in. What, what is that number?
Or does it relate to what Councilmember Bodie talked about some meetings ago and what we've talked about as a, as a group? And that we've read about in the paper with, you know, large corporations, you know, buying up single-family homes and taking them off market. How much is that happening here in our community? And, you know, do we have the right incentives or encouragement? One way or another that encourages that or disincentivizes that?
The other question, I happen to do Airbnb's that count as vacant.
If there's no permanent occupant, then they're, then they're vacant.
We like them at all. And we, if you go online, there's quite a few in Lake Forest Park. So, yeah. Uh, I, I haven't looked lately, but there are, I, I was surprised when I saw there weren't, there were more than ten. But so those could be part of the, we could have investors, we could have people buying and selling. We could have some that are Airbnb's and therefore count as vacant. So there's three categories.
Yeah, and you're always gonna want some vacancy because that's how people move in. There's, there's always gonna be a little bit of turnover. Uh, we get concerned perhaps if there's, uh, not enough vacancy or if there's way too much vacancy. But having, having some vacancy is very normal and healthy. So I, I, I don't think that there's anything, um, overly concerning about having some number of vacant units. I don't, I don't think there's anything concerning about the number of vacant units that are here, uh, as of when that data was.
As we move into these, you know, questions around housing particularly. How will we balance like what we can imagine and, you know, envision for our city? Because I understand the comp plan is really just policy guidance. It's not actually code. But how do we balance what we can imagine with what we're legally able to do? Like is that, is that something that will be part of this conversation? Or does that come at the coding level?
Um, it's, it's a little bit of both. Uh, so I'm not, I'm not gonna let our conversations go sideways. To something that we're never gonna be able to, to get through state review. Um, I'm not, I'm not. Like I'll, I'll be honest with you if I think that we're veering off in a direction that's just not gonna work. Um, but beyond that, um. Goals and, goals in particular have some vagueness in them policies to a lesser extent. Uh, since they're, they're more action oriented, even if they're not specifically action statements. Uh, and, and once we get into implementation and any development code changes that need to come from that. That's where some of. Development code changes that need to come from that, that's where some of the more specific. Uh, creative ideas could be um fleshed out.
Thank you.
I, I just have a question because I, or a comment or. I mean, we're talking about adding on over eight hundred units to Lake Forest Park. And then you just brought up that there is no regulation in terms of Airbnb's. Like, how do we know that those homes are going to be going to? Family. Like, we build eight hundred new units and then. They wind up getting purchased and using it as investment properties anyways. Like, how are we planning to? Protect that? And maybe that's just, you know, you don't have to answer my question. I'm just throwing it out there. If we do this. We're looking forward with this and we're asking the community to get on board with this. How do we protect that?
So that. Yeah. Um, a, an action item related to short-term rental uh regulations might be appropriate. Uh, to, to address that specific concern. Uh, that's something that we can talk a little bit more about. As an action item.
I would say the most of what you, there's been a lot of stories about invest, investment companies buying up huge blocks of, you know. Residential housing. They're not using for Airbnb's. They're turning them into rentals and driving the rental price of like long-term rentals. And I'll say it again, I have no objection to Airbnb licensing, but that's, right now, we have about forty active Airbnb units in the city. Many of which are attached to a home like the one I run. So it's not, it's not actually a vacant home. It's a. Basically a guest room from my home, right? And that's many of them. So I would, well, I got no problem regulating short-term rentals. That's not what's threatening housing stock in a community like this. I don't think it's more about get investors coming in. Who are just renting, 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 driving up prices big time. And I don't know that well enough to know if this is the type of community where that would happen or not. Um, but.
So council member Goldman lives in the townhouses down on one forty-fifth. I always forget their name uh in the sub. What is that?
Southern Gateway.
Southern Gateway. And uh, at the time of the purchase, a large percentage, I think. He said, maybe a third, and I, I, I don't remember. But anyway, I don't know what we said, a quarter is in a third. Uh, what were purchased by investment companies? And they're not even domestic, uh, you know, investment companies. And uh, I think that the ones that purchased there were some international investment companies and they're rented out. And the challenges in that situation is dealing with um proxy situations because they're absentee owners.
Recommendation.
Then you mute them. Yeah.
So. Yeah. So you can always watch it on Zoom.
Anyway, thank you. Um, anyway, uh, it's, it's interesting because they have an HOA and if they want to make improvements. They have so, so many absentee people and they, they can't necessarily get the votes that they would need to make changes. What if they want to do a special assessment for the benefit of the community? So. It's actually, you know, the ad, they, they don't, they're supposed to notify you of the addresses of the renters. They don't necessarily comply with the rules on that. So it was very interesting. We recently had that conversation and he's the president of the HOA. So he knows. So anyway, uh, just uh. Uh, I think that's tougher to get a handle on honestly because you can't. Prevent people from buying investment property. So and it does raise bets, as you say, yeah, so. It's, I don't know if Christina and her team have any thoughts on that, but that is uh. That, I think that's hard to get a handle on.
I am, I agree, and I am delighted to defer that question to David and Andrew.
That's perfect.
Somebody write that down for when they're back in March. You know, it's, it's a really difficult uh challenge to, to deal with. Um, because I, I, you. You are absolutely right. You can't stop an investor from buying a property. We, we can put. Controls in place on short-term rentals. That's. A drop in the bucket when you're looking at some broader scheme to purchase. A large number of homes. I mean, I think that that's. Maybe less likely in our region just because of where housing prices are, but it's certainly not impossible. Um, and it's a very different problem than something like short-term rentals, which is overall. I mean, it's, it's fairly minor as Yana indicated.
It, it's really a risk for middle housing. Because that's the portable uh stuff that investors want. That's why Southern Gateway was a target.
I would argue that it's not just a risk. It's, it is a part of the problem with the housing. It's, 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 it's the invisible. Uh, force that's really uh impacted the housing.
All right, we've only got twenty-two minutes left. Uh, so I want to. Move on to the next slide. We'll have another chance to talk about this at our January meeting. So don't worry, it's not disappearing. Uh, we have, we have another shot. Um, although January, it sounds like it's also going to be pretty busy. So. Might have to come up with a different system uh for managing our discussion. Um, stay tuned on that. Uh, all right. So the next, the next piece of guidance that we have to talk about is PSRC Vision 2050. So this is again, a place where we're, we're generally consistent. This is something that we should expect in all of the elements since you previously got your plan certified. Um, so looking at some of the new changes, um, these are again really focused on. Uh, racial equity and inclusivity. So there, there are some specific policy requirements for uh inclusive community planning. Um, that uh, the way that I am understanding it is more about the, the process and making sure that we are intentionally bringing. Uh, diverse groups to the table for discussion. So that's more about how we're structuring our engagement approach. Um, but then also addressing disparities in access to opportunity. Expanding employment opportunities. That is something that will naturally, I think. In, uh, in my opinion, that we'll naturally plan for when we're talking about accommodating those five hundred and fifty jobs in the city. Um, and then we have some requirements uh to reduce health disparities and improve health outcomes. Across the board. Um, and then consider risks and mitigation for residential, but also for commercial displacement. And commercial displacement is often um the place there that I think of as the, like the poster child for that is in Redmond. Uh, where you have all of these um older strip malls that had. Small local businesses that were torn down and they put a new mixed-use tower. And all of the businesses in the bottom were chains and that little mom and pop. Was displaced to somewhere else or in the city or maybe out of the city or, or maybe just never came back. Um, and this is really the only place where uh our guidance talks much about commercial displacement. That's. I, I might be able to tell that that's something that is um of strong interest to me, but this is, this is really the only place where, where we really get to talk about it. Um, okay, so those are the requirements, uh, some considerations. So we have, we have some of this, some similar policy guidance that King County. Put out uh encouraging infill and increased density near transit in particular. This is something that is generally already planned for uh the way that Lake Forest Park is zoned with. Uh, the town center having uh potential transit stop um. High-capacity transit stop or higher-capacity transit stop uh and that being the place where most. Potential higher-density housing could go. So that's, that's another one that I think is already sort of naturally addressed. Um, but there are some other opportunities for that kind of approach uh that would be consistent with the policies from Vision 2050. Uh, and then I also um. Suggest considering expanding our uh historic preservation policy, goals and policies. Uh, to um more um expansively address uh some of the new policy language around. Cultural resources so that that goal and policy address uh primarily historic resources, but. Uh, doesn't yet touch on some of the cultural side of things or the visual resources side of things. And I know that. Um, visual resources are actually something that Lake Forest Park is fairly rich in, given the topography. Uh, so that's something that, that I think could pretty easily be added there. Does anyone have any initial reactions to the requirements or? Perhaps want to continue the discussion that we were just having uh related to infill. Okay. Um. Thinking a little bit about the health disparities and health outcome side of things. I think this is where we're going to start to see a lot of tie-ins with some of the transportation planning and. Access to sidewalks or how we might be able to prioritize sidewalk improvements. To, to be able to get to things like the Burke Gilman Trail or uh some of your amazing local parks or other. You know, other amenities that are maybe not in Lake Forest Park. Does that seem like? An accurate statement? Does that, does that? Land for you guys in terms of how we might approach this um consideration of health and health equity? Across your neighborhoods.
Uh, I guess the one thing I, I've thought about. A little bit, especially in um like the southern gateways, there really are no green spaces or parks. In that area. You know, if you look at the, when the, the county went through and did their big kind of um. Equity analysis, looking at health outcomes, uh, uh. Family income, uh, diversity, all that. One of the metrics they used around, is there equitable access to open spaces? Do you have, you know, basically open spaces that are within walking distance? And. I kind of was looking at Lake Forest Park. I'm like, you know what? I think there's a few areas here where we could use something. And I feel like Southern Gateway. The only place that's walkable is to go down to the trail, you know, the lakefront trail, which isn't, I mean, it's great for walking and commuting. It's not a place to go play. It's not an open space to go hang out, relax. And there are, there are funding opportunities out there. Um, through Conservation Futures Tax that the city could take advantage of. And really target. Acquisition of some properties for green space purposes where we most need them in specific neighborhoods. So I'd like to see that looked at. And possibly include some, you know, encouragement uh for the city to. To look at that. And that's the type of thing you obviously want to involve the community where you're doing it. So. We want to engage the community living in that area, but that's the one pocket where I see a real disparity in. Access to open space. And that has proven to be associated with health, right? Like even being around nature. Whether it's a field or trees and it, it's like there's data there. So I, I'd like to see us.
I think, yeah, I think we should look on the parks board and maybe.
There are about four or five of those areas, if you look around the city. Yeah, yeah. Uh, that don't have uh quick access or, you know, reasonable walking access to green spaces.
I think to your point, when we get to those sections, Christina, I don't know how much you're interfacing directly with our parks um board, but. It would be nice to get some guidance from them since they've been really close to us for a while.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great idea. Maybe we could invite them to a joint meeting to share. Uh, more collaboratively.
Certainly, I, I bet Cory has some maps um that reflect that. Uh, and I think we have maps we've seen. Maybe even in the comprehensive plan that we could use for that, because you can visually see where the spaces are, but. I believe when we talked about it quite a while ago, there, there are about four or five neighborhoods, large, you know. Neighborhoods writ large.
Okay, Christine, I'm going to encourage you to move us along.
Okay, can I just make one? Sorry, I love that idea, but kind of uh what got me thinking was I was going to wait till we got to the transportation part. Um, to talk about maybe that uh back area of the sunny gateway with five twenty-two and. And sound transit. It seems to me this would be a very appropriate. If we could. Kind of align how uh we envision that corridor to look uh in our actual comp plan. Then it gives us kind of a legal, kind of a legal, kind of um prop. Uh, especially with sound transit is, is in opposition to the way that they are envisioning that area to, to come in. If we could actually incorporate that from down through the. How, if, if it's coming up here in, in Landy's, it would make sense to me to also include that. Um, you know, like how.
Other ones defining what, what characters we want on a transit board, right?
A hundred percent in, in relation to the health. I just was going to wait till transportation, but it's that came to mind too as we're talking.
Okay, thank you. Uh, all right. Then the last piece that we'll talk about uh is the Growth Management Act and recent changes from uh, from that. Um, again, the land use element is generally consistent with the requirements. Uh, we do need to. Make some uh, some specific updates to reflect the recent buildable lands analysis, which is now called the Urban Growth Capacity Report. Uh, and to incorporate the new housing and employment allocations. Um, one of the things that we want to uh think about as we're updating, not just the transportation element, but related elements like. The land use element is how we can also incorporate the uh recommendations from the Safe Streets, Safe Highways Plan. Uh, which uh will also help us address some of the physical activity uh related policies and public health policies. Um, I would open it up for discussion. I'm not sure that there's really much to add compared to where we've already been uh. In, in our process so far and tonight in particular, but if anybody has any other comments that they want to add to this, um, to this piece. Welcome that.
Before we have more conversation, uh, what, how much more do you have to go over with us tonight? I just want us all to be mindful of the time.
This is, this is pretty much it.
Okay, great.
I, I do have uh the, the actual um land use goals, uh, if we had wanted to look at them. Um, but we don't. I don't think that we have time to go through them uh in, in any depth. Uh, so we, we'll save it for next time.
But why don't we have a preview of them, understanding we might not be able to get to discussion about them? And then that way we can leave time for public comment.
Sure. So it's um, it's your existing goals. So um, it's broken up into two slides. Uh. You'll see some recommendations to update some of the language for inclusivity and that's. Um, I'll make some recommendations in the red line, but of course that's going to be up for discussion and wordsmithing or guidance. Uh, at your discretion at our next meeting. Um. I don't think that there are going to be uh significant changes to. Uh, really the content of the goals. We may, we may look at some of the policies in residential neighborhoods as a place to add some options. For either um allowing or encouraging in some spectrum. Uh, certain kinds of middle housing as a way to, or, or um, sorry, uh, infill. Uh, or redevelopment and, and uh reuse of buildings as a way to, to get at some of the equity um pieces. Uh, and then on the next page, so you have nine lady schools total. Um, you'll see some updates in these ones uh to address uh some of the more specific requirements around public health and to reflect our discussion tonight. Uh, about that. Um. You'll probably see a little bit of update in the economic vitality policies that help address some of the updated jobs requirements. Um. I don't think that you're going to see significant changes in the public uses or the regional issues. And I already mentioned uh expanding. Goal eight related to historic preservation to more um, more completely address the cultural side of things and the visual resources side of things. Uh, so that's kind of, that's where I, I'm thinking that we'll head based on the discussion that we had tonight. And we'll talk more specifically about it next time when you guys are looking at our first red line.
Thank you very much for a thorough uh presentation and education.
Yeah, I um, I really appreciate everyone hanging in there with me. I know there was a lot of. Information. Uh, so I, I appreciate your attention and look forward to continuing the discussion uh next, next month. Uh, so I, I appreciate your attention and look forward to continuing the discussion uh, next, next month.
Well, with that, good, good night, welcome, stick around for our last eight minutes.
All right, thanks, everyone.
Happy holidays, everyone, happy new year.
Do we have any new business?
I might mention, I don't know if this counts as any business or not, it's something I wanted to share that relates to this. But I kinda just decided that I wanted to, you know, hear from other people, you know, start calling some opinions and ideas. From uh, people in the community that I know in some way. So I just kinda sent out an email to kind of all the people I know. And I attracted a group of eighteen people who want to meet informally, regularly, talk about this stuff. And I thought it was really cool, we had a first meeting this past weekend, about ten people showed up. I was actually really pleasantly surprised how interested they were and also how they really don't know much about the comp plan. What that means is how it translates to zoning and how it translates to regulations. And I would just encourage you to, you know, engage your friends, neighbors or whatever. And I think the more we can get people to pay attention and, I mean, this is, this is not about, I'm not trying to build a coalition. I'm trying to hear from people so that I can channel them that are here and channel the diversity of opinions. And even with a community that you might think it was pretty homogeneous, the opinions were not. And uh, it was really interesting and valuable, so uh, if you have capacity to do that, um, I would highly recommend it. It was actually really fun and, you know, I showed some slides, showed a few things, but mainly it was about, you know, talking about the issues. So I just highly encourage that.
And I know many of you do, do that already, so I mean, to Yanni's point, that, that some of those things might be. Useful to mobilize again for super outreach. So, yeah, I think that, things that we can do to get folks to find, to come in and participate in that. Outreach that will start up next year would be really nice. Really nice, thank you. Uh, any other new business? Reports announced? Um, are there any additional citizen comments? Do we have anybody still online?
It looks like Don Fini locked off.
And uh, agenda for the next meeting, we're gonna add, so Christina will have the biggest say in that, but then we'll add a, a few minutes to. Just make a decision about what in staff, I want that, and then um, that's it. Uh, going for a good holiday and. If you're interested, or we can stick around for, for a minute. All those in favor? We are adjourned and I wish you all.